Like the call, the Monday, April 3rd, Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at this time, and we'll start with our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, with the invocation.
Thank you so much and good morning, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Bless our telecommunicators, who we honor here today, for their dedication to our citizens during the most critical times of need. Father, we pray for our military, our first responders, and frontline workers who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
We ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Assistant County Manager Ms. Sherry Slater.
(Applause) Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to take a minute to recognize all the elected officials with us this morning. Our Register of Deeds, Ms. Amiga Jarman is here with us. Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach, our Sheriff Mr. Chris Thomas, and representing Onslow County Schools is Dr. Brendan Gartner. We appreciate everyone coming and joining us this morning. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. At this time, ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, motion to amend the agenda to remove Item 6E Recreation Center Design Service Contract and Item 6F Capital Project Ordinance Recreation Center Construction.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. At this time, we need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Today, we do have one citizen signed up for our public comment period. I would remind citizens, please address your comments to the Board as a whole. I will call up speakers in the order in which they have signed up. Speakers have exactly five minutes. We ask you to take your seat at the end of your five minutes, and we ask that you not speak with anyone in the audience or attempt to share your time with anyone. Our public speaker this morning, we'd like to welcome Mr. John Liguafado of 123 Mendover Drive, Jacksonville. And if you would, sir, please approach the microphone and repeat your name and address, especially if I mispronounced it.
Sure. Good morning, gentlemen, madam. My name is John Liguafado. My address is 123 Mendover Drive in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Today, I want to discuss with you guys an issue pertaining to a county ordinance. As some of you guys know, I moved from Baltimore, Maryland, back in 2017 down here to Jacksonville, North Carolina. We stayed out in the county basically because it's kind of of a more unregulated, more rural type area. We have a small business called Stardust Automotive, and I also end up speaking for many other small businesses that are out here that are within the same type of genre as I am. So what brings me here to speak to you guys about today is the ordinance or the restricted bad, the restriction ordinance dealing with the automotive industry. Back, I believe it was 2018, I could be wrong on that. I was wrong. On 2019, I had received a zoning permit, authorized me to run a home occupational repair business right outside of our home. Built into the county, there are certain restrictions, such as the amount of vehicles that are allowed at the property, how many trucks and deliveries are allowed per week, in addition to the way that you need to keep your property upkept. Within side of those, I kept it, you know, when the county would come out, they go, wow, you know, we can't even tell you're running an automotive business. Like, good job. Shortly after that, we ended up having our zoning permit revoked because there was a county ordinance that had said there was no automotive industry allowed. Now, this was kind of confusing to me because we have paperwork, which I can show you right here, if you, gentlemen and madam, are interested in, that show and state, and this is coming directly from the government or government office, Section 903 as far as accessory uses, dealing with home occupational repair, which is 903 dot three, dot four, and dot five, which some of those also will apply. But it's very easy to be able to run a home occupational repair business, keep your home clean, and have it not affect the property values that are around your area. So I functioned with inside of those very well. Short, like I said, shortly after that, they ended up revocating it because of this rule. There are certain parts of the automotive industry I do understand which should be restricted, such as things dealing with automotive paints, things that release chemicals and fumes into the air, no problem. But for gentlemen like me, where I have a wife, I have seven children, we have seven dogs that we care for as well, that's a lot of mouths to feed. And so every little bit of income that comes in really does make a big difference. So we went from making about $750,000 a year that was taken while we were running our business, we dropped down to around like $420,000, $430,000. So there's a lot of revenue that the county is also missing. I'm one business out of many. Now, I try to be as honest and as abiding as possible, but there's a lot of people that are with inside of Onslow County that I'm friends with that are scared to come out because they know the county's going to come after them. They're going to say, hey, we got to shut you down. If you don't, we're going to fine you. And there's all these things that can happen to them. There's a lot of revenue that the county is missing from this as well. So 7% that I get taxed for just parts, labor, accessories, and things like that, that's 300-some thousand plus out of the county's pocket, just from me alone. Now, I was blessed that I was able to happen to find a shop at the right place at the right time where I could still keep my business rolling and still be able to just kind of barely keep our head above water. But there's many other businesses that are out there that aren't, that are struggling, and they're afraid to come legal and, you know, file the paperwork with the county and file their taxes. And I've already told them, hey, you guys really need to do this anyway. But there's a loss, a lot of lost revenue because of this one little ordinance. So I would request and ask you guys, if you would, take into consideration in removing or at least modifying the county ordinance, which restricts the use of automotive use, to being able to allow for automotive use. But even if you got to restrict it a little bit or go strictly what you already have in writing would be amazing, and I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, and God bless.
Thank you so much, Mr. Liguafado, and that concludes our public comment period.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And Ms. Griffin, let's move on with special presentations this morning.
Yes, we have some very special presentations today. It's one that we always look forward to. Our first presentation is to honor our amazing telecommunicators. What they do every day is extraordinary, but we have some particular, particularly amazing feats that we want to recognize today, and that's when a life is saved or a child is brought into the world through the help of a telecommunicator. And I present Mr. Ray Silence and Norman Bryson as well.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. This morning, we would like to recognize the following communicators for their CPR instructions to save a life during a 911 call. First, we have Stephanie Dare, two saves. Yasha White, two saves. Jennifer Pearson, a save. Graceland Fountain, two saves. Skylar Hare, three saves. Lindsey Stevens, a save. Jenin Griffith, a save. Allison Gavry, a save. And Stephanie Monroe, a save. Now, we would like to recognize the following communicators for giving the instructions on childbirth and successively delivering a baby during a 911 call this past year. Kelly Kennedy delivered a baby boy. Brian Cole delivered a baby girl. Skylar Hare delivered a baby girl. And Miranda Bean delivered a baby girl. Again, thank you for allowing me to recognize these telecommunicators.
While they're taking pictures, I will read into the record a very important proclamation that is next on our agenda, and that is, "In recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week." State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week 2023. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Onslow County Communications Center. And whereas the skilled public safety telecommunicator is the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas telecommunicators of the Onslow County Emergency Services Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas emergencies can strike at any time, and we rely on the vigilance and preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 9th, 2023 through April 15th, 2023, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Onslow County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Presented this the third day of April 2023, and Representatives from Onslow County Emergency Services will accept this proclamation, and Chairman has requested that Commissioner Robin Knapp present.
First of all, congratulations to all of you that won an award with saves and delivering a baby. A lot of people forget the telecommunicators are our first line of defense. Being in law enforcement for 25-plus years, I've had a chance to deal with telecommunicators during shootings, during high-speed chases, where you're in direct contact with the telecommunicators. They're calling in backup for you. I know of one particular case that stands out, and they were calling backup and directing all the other responding police officers to our scene. And then from a personal standpoint, you know, with my wife and my father and my daughter, I've called them several times. And there's one thing that remains constant every time, even during a shooting or an accident or anything else. Can you guys still hear me? Okay. Is that the calm demeanor that these people display, and a lot of people forget about telecommunicators. They are the first line of defense, and people don't understand that because 99% of the time, the telecommunicators are going to be the ones who receive the call. It could be anything from an autistic child having a tantrum of some sort, a drowning, suicide, childbirth, whatever it might be. And we got to keep these people in our prayers and remind ourselves that they're part of the law enforcement community, they're part of the first responder community, without a doubt. And we couldn't do our job without them. And I want to thank you guys for everything you've done. I really mean that from a personal experience, and congratulations, outstanding job. Norman?
First of all, I would like to thank our Commissioners for taking this opportunity to recognize our telecommunicators and for all what they do. You know, the biggest thing when we start looking at telecommunicators or any of the county government is about service. Service to the public and what you're doing for the public to assist and help out. And, you know, we are very honored to be able to recognize all the saves that we have up to here today, as well as those childbirths that we have. In total, in the 911 center last year, there is 19 lives saved by the act of telecommunicators with four children being born. And I think that's pretty tremendous for all they do and all the work that they are, because, you know, it takes a good, it takes a quality person to be able to come in and do what they do. Thank y'all very much.
Chairman Foster and Commissioners, we have an additional very important proclamation this morning, and I'll read it into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month 2023. Whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and our children are our most valuable resource. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and during 2022, Child Protective Services social workers assessed 3,137 reports of child abuse, neglect, and dependency in Onslow County. And whereas child abuse and neglect can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect must be a high priority that requires individuals, families, child-serving organizations, schools, faith-based groups, businesses, governmental agencies, and civic leaders to support safety and the physical, emotional, social, and educational well-being of children. And whereas promoting child abuse prevention programs that focus on family functioning and resiliency, knowledge of parenting and child development, social support systems and connections, parental resilience, and concrete supports helps to prevent child maltreatment and strengthens families. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognize April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for each and every child. We call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts and to support families thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Presented on the third day of April 2023 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and Representatives from Onslow County Department of Social Services is accepting this proclamation. Chairman Tim Foster is presenting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. First, thank you to our social workers and all those that are involved with the Department of Social Services and taking care of our kids. 3,137 reports of child abuse, neglect, and dependency come across in 2022. Our greatest resource, without a doubt, for this future of our nation, our county, and our communities are our children. And I reiterate, we encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for each and every child, not just during this month, but year-round. We see something taking place with our children, make sure you take that step to report it. Because we, along with these wonderful people here, are what stands between a child's future and the end. So make sure we understand, the greatest resource are our children, and we need to do everything we can to stop child abuse and neglect. And we appreciate Ms. Sanders and all that your team does for our children here in Onslow County. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. This morning, I'm going to have Kim Bailey, our Child Protective Services Program Manager, speak on behalf of Child Abuse Prevention.
Good morning, everyone. The theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month is actually breaking barriers and recognizing that that does not fall solely upon the shoulders of Onslow County DSS. We are all protective partners in keeping children free of abuse, neglect, or dependency. One abused child is one child too many. We need the help and assistance of our community partners, of other parents. One big thing that's being promoted through DHHS this year is use of social supports, use of those family networks and support systems. We utilize, as a parent, others to help us in strengthening our parenting skills and in prevention. When you see someone, you see abuse, neglect, or dependency, please report it. Also, with DHHS and Onslow County DSS, we use our community partners. You're such a, a strong force to help us prevent child abuse. So through education in Onslow County, that one child, maybe next year, we can have a few less CPS reports, because you can save a child's life by caring, by saying something, by reporting, by redirecting, by loving someone enough to help them, to educate them through social supports and through community supports. So thank you.
For our next item, we are very pleased to have two department heads come forward today to talk about what their department does for taxpayers. And our first speaker is Mr. Norman Bryson, Director of Emergency Services.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Our mission of the Department of Emergency Services is to provide and coordinate effective and efficient emergency and disaster response and recovery programs. Our goal is to protect lives and property and to serve the public. We provide this service through four different divisions. Those divisions are Emergency Management, E91 telecommunications, Emergency Medical Services, otherwise known as EMS, and Fire Rescue. Each division has a different purpose and skillset. I will highlight some of the work that they perform. Onslow County spends a great deal of time on hurricanes. However, we have other hazards we are prone to, such as tornadoes, hazardous materials, woods fires, commercial structure fires, land and search, water rescue, cybersecurity issues, and many other hazards, to include occasionally the mythical winter weather storm. Our Emergency Management Division is a general statute-required program that provides disaster planning, preparation, response, and cover efforts for those hazards. They do this through disaster planning, coordination with local, state, and federal entities, a yearly review of licensed healthcare facilities, disaster plans, and developing and conducting disaster exercise and training. In the last year, there were 11 significant events that Emergency Management Division either activated the County Emergency Operation Center for or responded to. The county's E91 Division's purpose is to receive, process, record, and store emergent and non-emergent phone calls, and to dispatch the appropriate fire, EMS, and law enforcement agencies. We provide E91 services for everywhere in Onslow County except for the City of Jacksonville Police and Fire. In 2022, our county E91 Center received 172,476 phone calls and dispatched 137,168 calls for service. From these calls, the 911 Center assisted in 19 saved lives through the provision of CPR instructions and assisted in delivering full babies by providing birthing instructions. Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, responds to emergent and non-emergent medical calls and provides basic and advanced life support medical care. In 2022, EMS employees responded to 25,492 medical calls, transported 13,079 patients to nine hospitals in the region. Examples of these calls: 1,196 overdoses, 1,122 mental health calls, 1,362 trauma calls, 286 cardiac arrests. From this, county EMS employees saved 89 individuals from cardiac arrest in 2022. A branch of our EMS system is Community Paramedic Program. Its purpose is to reduce the need of individuals that frequently use the EMS system. They assist with drug rehabilitation, with mental health assistance. They provide other resources, such as assistance to the homeless. In 2022, the Community Paramedics responded to 3,160 calls, assisted 341 Narcan reversals, provided Narcan-trained 974 individuals, and assisted 232 individuals from seeking alternate healthcare destinations other than the hospital. Our Fire Rescue Division provides coordination and support to both governmental and volunteer fire departments, provides fire protection in the Onslow County Fire Rescue District, which is a Bear Creek and Freedom Way fire stations, supports fire agencies with maintaining and lowering their insurance service office rating or ISO ratings, and performs fire investigations. In 2022, Onslow County Fire Rescue, which is a Bear Creek and Freedom Way station, responded to 780 emergency calls. Of that, 264 were fire calls, 78 were wrecks, 438 were medical calls. They also lowered their ISO rating down from a Class 6 to a Class 4 for the entire district, and the division also investigated 44 fires in which eight were ruled as arson. Commissioners, the last thing that I would like to cover is the people that provide the service. While I'm not going to name off all the personnel in the department, we cannot respond to ambulances or provide the life-saving measures without people like Billy Pollock or Alexis Russell. We cannot answer the 911 calls or dispatch agencies without people like Skylar Hare or Megan Greve. Or fight the fires and perform vehicle extrications without individuals like Gabriel Fountain and Cameron Monick. Or address overdoses or mental health issue needs without Stephanie Caines or Willie Hendersons. Or view disaster plans or support operations at the department without people like Sarah Fran Syam and Elise Salter. We estimated in 2022 that 201,963 citizens or visitors received services from our department. We would not be able to provide these services without our dedicated professional and responsible personnel. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Norman, and we appreciate all that Norman and his staff do. We have what is often recognized as the top emergency services department in the state, and it's because of the hard work they put in. Our next department head, another department head who truly is leading in his field in the state, Mr. Joe Duane for Director of Veteran Services.
Good morning, everyone, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Commissioners. To give you a little bit of backdrop, I retired from the Navy in February of 2017, and I joined the county in March of 2017. And I'll freely admit, my, my, my team, when I came on board, taught me how to be a VSO. But I think a bigger part of it is they helped me transition to the civilian life. And so that's what they do every day. I'm very proud of my crew. And I'm going to name them because I don't have a large shop like they do, so I'm going to name my current crew right now. So Laura McKinney, Chris Kason, Terry Barbie, Reginald Roy, Doug Dixon, Brianna Romans, and Ricardo Holland. And then also, Norma Smith. She quit on me a few months ago, but, no, she didn't. She got promoted. Really proud of my crew, and I really do think you've got probably one of the best VSOs in the state as far as offices. We, as far as the patient, excuse me, the, the population of veterans in the community, it's, there's numerous data points, but we have about 42,000 within the community here. That does not include family members, okay? And then also, within the census, our population within Onslow is about 20, 21% veterans. Despite the variation in numbers we get for population that we struggle with every year, I can tell you that every year in expenditures, we lead the state, it really is the top two or three normally in expenditures. This past year was $6.9 million that was brought in total expenditures from benefits that veterans were receiving. We have the second or third, depending on your data point, largest population as far as veterans in the community. And then we also maintain, I believe, an outstanding reputation in the community. Some of the services that we provide, we obviously serve as liaisons between ourselves and between the veterans and the Department of Veterans Affairs. We do disability compensation and pension claims. We, every tag you see in the community, every DV tag and partially DV tag, and I was in the Navy tag, or whatever, we validate all those. So that's a, pretty much a walk-in, everyday thing. The tax exclusion forms that we do, we do that for every veteran. We certify those. The tax exclusion forms that we do, we do that for every veteran, we certify those. And then lifetime hunting and fishing, if they're eligible for that, we do that as well. We help them enroll in medical care here in the community here as far as VA and the Fayetteville System. We also do, which people don't realize, we help widows and widowers with indemnity compensation, DIC, death benefits, as well as burial benefits. We do submit appeals and claims up to the Board of Veterans Appeals, and I'll talk about that in a second, the bigger impact that's going on with that. And obviously, we answer, we get all kinds of questions. We probably get 25,000 to 30,000 calls a year, just calling, you know, asking us about what's going on with this paperwork, or can you help me with that? Really proud of the fact that we've really improved some processes, but I need to thank the board and the leadership, Ms. Griffin, and my boss, Ms. Slater over here, how much support you guys have given us. You've given us a full-time veteran service technician, you've given us a part-time VSO who's now working out at the Vet Center, I'll talk about that in a minute. You modernized us, we got modernized a little bit from an MS-DOS claim system to a web-based system now, so we're much more efficient at that, and it seems to be working rather well. The biggest impact that we have right now is called the PACT Act. I'm pretty sure you all probably have heard about it. It was signed in August of 2022. The biggest impact that we're seeing from that is that with that PACT Act, they not only increased some of the areas for the Vietnam vets from exposure from Agent Orange, but they also included a couple other conditions, including hypertension. And then on the flip side of that, for the Gulf War vets, there's a total of 23 conditions, of which 13 are head, neck, and cancers and things of that nature, lung. So we're seeing a lot of veterans, either, one, appealing and coming back that were previously denied for claims, or, two, making new claims. And so that has created for us a backlog. We're doing the best that we can. I won't apologize for our work effort, but we have gone from about four days to about 12 days to get an appointment with us. But you really can't hurry the process. We're not, we're not that fast. You have to research each claim, you have to work through it, and so we are working very hard, and we're working hard to try to keep that backlog down. Once we get Brianna, our new VSO, up to speed, that will help, but it takes several weeks, sometimes months, to get them certified by the VA before we can proceed forward. But she is going to start seeing claims very soon. On the flip side, on a good note, on the PACT Act, it was announced at the most recent conference last week that we're number two in the state in processing approval of PACT Act claims and appeals, so we've come out the gate doing pretty well. We also, with y'all's approval, the MOU that we created with Veterans Affairs, it's going rather well, I think. Rick's doing claims over at the Vet Center. I'm hoping eventually, maybe with some expansion in the future, we might be able to do more full-time over in those spaces. Hope to be able to do that. And I'm very excited that the Veterans Treatment Court finally came online. I've been hearing about this for forever, and so it did finally come online, which was just last week. Certainly, we're going to support those services as we go forward. I just wanted to just reiterate to you guys, you know, how much we are doing for the community, and we do try very hard, and we are producing, and those monies that are being received by our veterans, which are earned, are coming back to the community. And I just want to give props to my people. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you so much, Joe. We appreciate you.
All right. Have a good day. Thank you.
Moving into our next item, we do have one public hearing today, Chairman Foster and Commissioners, and this regards a franchise ordinance for mobile transport, and our staff introduction and recommendation will come from Norman Bryson.
Good morning again, Commissioners. The item that you have before you is a franchise agreement with Stellar Med Mobile Transport. Now, this is an item that, in accordance with our Onslow County Ambulance Service Ordinance adopted in May 19th of 1986, will have to go before the Board of Commissioners twice. The first one is to do a public hearing, and the second one, time and in a later meeting, will be a public hearing, and then consideration by the Board of Commissioners. This item, of course, is with Stellar Med Mobile Transport, an affiliate of Star Med Healthcare, has a question to ambulance franchise with Onslow County. The requested franchise is limited to non-emergent transport at the EMT level and does not include primary 911 response. Onslow County currently has two franchise ambulance services. The requested franchise will provide additional capacity for non-emergency transport needs. In accordance with the established procedures of Onslow County Camp Lejeune EMS System Plan, the County Peer Review Committee reviewed the franchise request at the February 7th meeting and recommends favorable consideration by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We do have one speaker who has signed up for the public hearing. I will call forward Mr. Zach Hurl, 273 Core Road in Richlands, North Carolina.
My name's Zach Hurl, 273 Core Road. I am the Business Development Manager for Stellar Med Mobile Transport. I'm also a citizen here in the community. I have been in EMS for almost 15 years, with about half of that serving with Onslow County EMS before I moved into a critical care position aboard Camp Lejeune at Naval. We're looking to start this company here because, in speaking with some colleagues and friends, as well as some professionals at our local hospitals, as well as hospitals and facilities in the surrounding area, there is a significant increase in the need for patient transport, and it is causing an excess amount of time for patients to be waiting in hospitals, taking up beds that other people need, causing EMS crews delayed times at the hospitals, being able to get their patients seen as they bring them in from the 911 call. So, in allowing us to start this company, we should be able to help alleviate that some. I've heard of usually anywhere from three to four hours someone having to wait for transport upwards of sometimes eight to 12 hours before a BLS or EMT level ambulance is available to just take them back to a nursing home, or take them home, or take them to hospice. Just want to do our part. This is my community, this is where I live, so that's all.
Thank you so much. If you'd like to take a seat on the front row in case the Commissioners have a question in a moment. No one else has signed up for the public hearing. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak specifically about this franchise ordinance for Stellar Med Mobile Transport, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and at this time, Chairman Foster, this is available for Commissioner discussion.
Any discussions or questions in relation to this?
I have a question. So you are just now starting up this franchise. Sir, I'm sorry. And it's Zach Pearl, was it?
Mr. Hurl.
Yes, ma'am. Zach Hurl. So this is a startup, yes, ma'am, for the ambulance company, yes. Star Med has been in the healthcare space for a while. They're based out of Charlotte. They did a significant amount of testing here in Onslow County for COVID, as well as vaccination, and that is, we're headed up by Dr. Paramzadian, who is also local here. I worked with him at Onslow, that's where I met him, became friends, and we started batting around this idea of starting this thing up.
Gotcha. I guess my question is, because my understanding and recollection is the last transport system that we had was, I think, bankrupt, didn't they? Is that correct? Norm, I'm sorry.
Yes, we did have one that went out of business. Now, we still do have two others that are still have franchise agreements and operating. They were not the only ambulance service that we had operating.
Okay. I just, I guess business experience would be something that I would love to know about to feel like I can put a big stamp of approval on it. So I'm assuming that you're staffed deeply with people that have business experience, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We are, like I said, Star Med has multiple clinics in the Charlotte area, and they are overseen by Star Mount Healthcare, who is a healthcare management company also based out of Charlotte, so we've got a very deep pool of experience.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Quick question. You said you work with Prezadian?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Prezadian?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know him. He's a local individual with Star Med, and he was instrumental in some COVID discussions, and he was monitoring that, so I understand. And plus, the ambulance, from a personal experience, the ambulance transport that you provide is essential. Having a father in a rest home for about seven, eight years, one occasion, I couldn't pick him up from the hospital after taking him there, and he had to sit there and wait four hours before an ambulance was dispatched. But then some other companies came into, like Friendly, I guess Friendly Ambulance Service, or some other ones that came, and they were able to respond and pick him up. And I think the service is very, very essential, especially for the elderly, because you don't want an elderly person, especially suffering from dementia or anything else, sitting in that hospital after treatment hours. And so I appreciate what you're doing, and I do appreciate Dr. Prezadian. I think he's a good doctor, he's a good man, so, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I hear about the need for medical transport all the time from our citizens, and I think there's certainly a need for another franchise in Onslow County.
Just as a point of procedure, this is not eligible for action today, so today we're just doing the public hearing.
More questions or discussion? Fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
Thank you. Moving on to our general items, we have a report from the Community Child Protection Team and Child, Community Child Fatality Prevention Team, and we will call forward the amazing Ms. Kim Mackey, who sadly is threatening to retire soon. So this might be our last presentation from her.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Foster, Vice Chairman Knapp, Commissioners, Ms. Griffin, and all those who serve Onslow County. I am here to present our annual Child Fatality Prevention Team and Protection Team Report. This is a required report, it's an annual report that's required by the North Carolina General Statute, 7B 1406. Just a little bit about our team. We identify system problems that may contribute to a child's death. We make recommendations for the prevention of future child deaths. We implement local recommendations. We advocate for children and educate the community on how children are dying and how to keep children safe from injury and harm. Our committee is composed of, we have our DSS Director, we have law enforcement, that's Onslow County Sheriff's Department, as well as JPD. We have school system onboard, Garnet Lytton, I have a local health provider, we have a public health director as well, we have Judge, a county medical examiner, that position is currently vacant, we have peers, mental health services, we have a representative from the Onslow County Community Human Services Board, and then we have appointed members by you, and that is the Emergency Medical Services. We have youth services, we have a parent rep, and that parent rep is someone who has lost a child. We have DA's office, and that position is currently vacant, and then we have military as well, as well as DJJ, Division of Juvenile Justice. So our cases reviewed for 2022, we had two CPS investigations that came, and those cases come when there are stuck cases, or there may be some systemic problems, and so they are able to bring those cases. And the two cases that we dealt with, which we really see a lot of, is children that have dual diagnosis. They may have some type of mental health problem, but there are some behavior problems as well, that's really delinquent behavior. So we see a lot of those cases, and we have two of those that were brought about, and we were able to give some information. As far as our child fatalities, we had reviewed 31 cases. 11 of those were medical existing health problems for children and infants. We reviewed five premature deaths, we had five suicides, we had four unsafe sleep practices, one traffic accident, one drowning, one homicide, one choking accident, and two unspecified causes of mortality, meaning that autopsy was not able to define a reason for death for a child between the ages of birth and 17. So some of the conditions that affect the well-being of children and families in Onslow County, once again, cold sleeping and unsafe sleep practices is a big one for us, illicit drug use during pregnancy or substance-affected infants, we have perinatal challenges, and that has been an increase for us, teen suicide, and opioid use among youth and families. During the deaths due to unsafe sleep practices, this is one of the big things that we're focusing. As you can see, in 2020, we reviewed three cases, 2021, there were two deaths, and 2022, we reviewed four deaths. Teen suicide is up again. 2020, as you can see, we had two hanging, 2021, we had one, and 2022, we reviewed five teen deaths, two hanging, one gunshot, the youngest being nine years old. Some of the strategies that we use to address these conditions is that we provide ongoing education in recognizing and reporting child abuse, youth violence, and suicide prevention. We continue education efforts in safe sleeping for infants. Our child welfare social workers go over and over those plans with families when they have babies that we're involved with, trauma-informed training and awareness, pregnancy risk factors and importance of early prenatal care, and we continue to participate in community outreach and community gathering functions. Some of our accomplishments from last year, we continue to distribute pack and plays in car seats to promote safe practices, especially those safe sleep practices. We provide in-service training on safe sleep presented by community partners. We had Onslow Memorial Hospital, as well as Navy Hospital to come. We participated in National Night Out. We participated in a Piers 5K Walk Run to raise money to purchase those pack and plays for families that have been identified in need. Piers offer car seat installation and training to community, and we actively participate in all of the training from the state to support our efforts. Some of the barriers that we continue to see for protecting children in Onslow County, a lack of timely access to appropriate mental health and substance abuse services, and that continues to be a big one for our children, especially the mental health. Challenges with receiving medical records from the military, we continue to struggle with that. We're hoping to see a change. We do have someone from the military that's on our committee now, that we're hoping that we'll be able to get those medical records and continue to partner with the base. Some of the challenges for protecting our children is, once again, opioid and substance use crisis in our county continues to be a big barrier and a big problem, a challenge. Parental failure to follow safe sleep protocols, as you saw the numbers continue to increase, and the lack of awareness and communication on those red flags for teen suicide and recognizing those signs. How we help Onslow County. We work in partnership with Onslow Safe Kids Coalition at Community Outreach, which is the focus of the Safe Kids, is prevention, keeping children safe. We partner with the Care Management for at-Risk Children with our local health department to promote safe sleep to clients, and we also participate in the pinwheel garden displayed in front of the CHS building to raise awareness of Child Abuse Prevention Month in April, as well as a plan of safe care is developed when a medical provider has diagnosed an infant zero to six months with being a substance-affected infant, and that plan must be developed prior to the infant being discharged from the hospital. That concludes my annual report for the Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Mackey? Thank you very much. We appreciate you sharing all the information with us this morning.
Thank you.
Or afternoon.
Thank you. Our next item is our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Annual Plan, and that will be presented by our Director of Social Services, Ms. Carrie Sanders.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item you have before you this morning is the Annual County Plan for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, also known as JCPC. Through a risk and needs assessment, JCPC determines what services are needed to reduce and/or prevent juvenile delinquency in our community. JCPC has also recommended the allocation from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and those funds to fund the following programs: juvenile restitution program, the school treatment program, Onslow County Teen Court, psychological assessments, and the SHARP Program. SHARP program, as well as temporary shelter services, promoting positive actions, and the STEPS program. A minimum of a 30% local match is required to receive these funds, and it is included in the budget for fiscal year 2324. This proposal is contingent on the final budget adoption by the county, however, the plan is required to be submitted to the state by May 15th. It is respectfully requested approval of the JCPC Annual County Plan and authorize the chairman to sign any necessary documents on behalf of the county, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is presentation of our annual comprehensive financial report, and for that, I welcome Ms. Carrie Wilson, who is an independent auditor and accountant with Martin, Starnes and Associates.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cassie Wilson with Martin, Starnes and Associates, and I would like to speak to you just briefly this morning about some of the audit highlights, some of the details in the financial statements. I believe that you received the June 30th 23 copy, or June 30th 22 copy there in front of you, and we can talk about any information. If you have questions along the way, I'm happy to, to pause and, and take those, and I'm sure the county manager will chime in as, as necessary. So we did issue an unmodified opinion, that is a clean audit report, that is the highest quality opinion that we can give you. The single audit reporting for the year, we ended up testing eight programs as major programs, and you'll see that information in the compliance section of the audited financial statements. Some important information to note as you're going through the report, there were lease standards that have come down from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and the lease standard that had to be implemented was 87 for this past year, so you will see additional 10 pages maybe, of just the lease liabilities that are related to that and the standard that had to be reported and implemented for the year. So if you have any questions as you're reviewing that, please don't hesitate to reach out. That took a lot of work on, on behalf of the Finance Department, everybody had to reach out to the department heads, it was a very lengthy process. That is something that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board pushed out, and they kept pushing off related to COVID and the impact that they knew it was going to take, the amount of time. There is a software out there that has come into the area and that has actually helped some of the governmental units with the lease standard that was implemented this past year, plus the one that will be implemented this coming year. So you will have GASB 96 to be implemented this next year, and so that'll be related to subscriptions, IT-based, any leases related to that will be evaluated, and then any liability related to that will now go into the financial statements. So again, that will, will take some, some effort for them to pull together and work through that information. With the requirements that the LGC, the Local Government Commission, has here in North Carolina, they now have performance indicators that have to be reported on. So we take your information in the financial statements, that goes into a spreadsheet, and then that information is then generated into any performance indicators that they, they want to look at. They have gone away from using comparative by population groups, and so now that's looking at your general fund expenditures and comparing you with other units. So you will see a change as you look at any information that comes down from them, comparing those groups, it, it will be a little bit different now. But one of the things that they implemented across the board was the requirement for the governments to report into them. Due to the lack of staffing and other issues that they have had, that cut back, this is one of the ways that they're kind of subsiding and, and still getting the information that they need, but using the governments to report directly to them. So there is information that your new finance officer, that I've had the privilege to work with the last few months now, he will present to you information related to the findings and the performance indicators that the LGC had. One of the requirements is, is just to mention in open public meeting about the findings that were there, but the detail of it is in the compliance section of the financial statements. So you will know that there were financial statement findings, there were federal award findings and state award findings, all which were addressed, have been very, very lengthy looked at, we have discussed it, Finance Department has addressed those, DSS Department has addressed those as well, and so we're very grateful for, for all the departments coming together to get that information and get all of those resolved very quickly. The result of the lapse in the finance officer is really what happened with, with a lot of that, the timing, the overlap, having the interim in there. I, I know that you, you appointed your interims and, and they were operating to their best ability, but not having that set person in there and having all the positions filled in the Finance Department really takes away from all the other pieces that need to be done and dealing with the audit. So I thank you for your, your patience in getting the audit report done, we, we worked as efficiently as we could. We did have some delays just because of that timing of getting everything with the finance officer, but once Andrew stepped in and we were able to, to work out what was open, what needed to be done, we did start working through that pretty quickly and submitted the financial statements to the Local Government Commission, which was approved, and so you have that, that hard copy with you now. I will mention the general fund specifically, that fund balance. The increase was $30,569,985. That growth is a very positive reflection of the county and the management of the funds here within Onslow. The fund balance position is something that is looked at differently when it comes to what the board looks at versus what the Local Government Commission looks at and evaluates you by. What they want to know is what the available fund balance is, and what the growth in that is or what the decrease in that is each year. You did have a considerable increase in available fund balance from June 30th of 21 to June 30th of 22, so that is again, very positive reflection. You were able to control all the spending and the efforts that you had, so the additional revenues that were received in the year were able to add to your fund balance. The other calculation that the Local Government Commission values is what your percentage is for your fund balance that is available comparative to your general fund expenditures. So your available fund balance was at 50.6. I believe you have your own internal requirements that you have that target for each year, so you can see that ending at 50.6 is, is very positive, and that's just in the available fund balance. If we look at what your unassigned fund balance percentage is, that's 22.9. So the unassigned, that is your portion, that you don't have any restrictions, any commitments on, in the fund balance for the general fund. For your comparative of your revenues and your expenditures from 21 to 22, you did have an increase in both revenues and in expenditures, and I'll talk about what those top revenues are. The ad valorem taxes, of course, being your top revenue, expend, or top revenues for the county, those did increase, so those ended at $110,776,800. So that was an increase of about 4.3 million. The other taxes and license, that was a big chunk related to your local option sales tax. A lot of the units within North Carolina were able to see that increase in local option sales tax, which is, which is always nice to see. So you ended at, with other taxes and license, at $75,930,69. So that was about a $4.9 million increase. And then, of course, the intergovernmental revenues, those are your federal and your state funding, those grants that come in, that fluctuates from year to year, and so you had a little bit of a decrease in that area of revenues, but like I said, most of that is just the fluctuation of those grants that come on and, and come off, and the general fund doesn't always house all the grants, you know, you have some special revenue accounts where some of those grants are housed in. So this is just related to general fund that would cover like Health Department, Social Services, those type of, even within your, your public safety. And of course, along with the revenues, you had some significant expenditures that we just want to point out, and that is the human services category. The majority of that is grant funded, so that had a little bit of an increase from 21 to 22, about a 1.9 million increase in those, that area of expenditures. Another significant area for, for most counties, most units across the state, public safety, that had an increase, that had about a 5.7 million increase from 21 to 22, some of that's a fluctuation in how you decide to spend with your capital outlay and grants in there Your debt service did increase for 22, you had some changes in what you had for your, your debt service payments, so that did increase quite a bit significantly compared to 21, but that was just the fluctuation and the changes that you had with, within your long-term notes. And debt service now also includes the lease payments, so that's something that you'll see a change in going forward. Just to briefly mention your enterprise funds, so your solid waste, that net operating income, that was pretty comparable from 21 to 22 for solid waste. The total net position increased about 3.3 million, and that is again, total net position. And then your unrestricted net position had an increase as well, and then your cash flows from operation was comparable from 21 to 22. The airport operating income was pretty comparable. The net position had an increase in the airport, about 5.6 million, and the unrestricted net position had a decrease. Again, with the airport, you have a lot of invested in your capital assets, and so that's why that, the unrestricted is, is lower. And then your cash flows from operations changed about 2 million for the airport, but overall, even with our compliance requirements and testing over the airport, there were no findings related to them, so that's a very positive reflection, lots of hard work from, from your airport there, and we appreciate that. So when you're looking through your financial statements, I would encourage you to, to detail through that management's discussion and analysis section, that's where a lot of the highlights, the comparative from year to year is. I know that what you're talking about now and budget and going forward, this is kind of all, all in hindsight, and, and you've moved on at this point, but do know that that positive fund balance was, was very good reflection and that, you know, you're, you're doing the right thing with managing those expenditures, you know, it's going to fluctuate depending on what your capital outlay and what your projects and what you have planned, so as you spend down your fund balance or how you decide to do that going forward, the LGC just likes to see that positive available fund balance. So as long as you're, you're seeing that, if you need to spend down the fund balance or however you decide to do that in the future based on the growth that you saw from 22, just know that the LGC is really looking at what that available fund balance is. Do you have any questions for me that I can answer at this time?
I have, I have one question for you. I'm glad that you referenced in the, I was looking at the findings a lot and addressed the fact that the turnover as the financial officer was really, caused a lot of issues.
Yeah.
That makes me feel better. The one thing that I did have a question for, and also you mentioned something about new requirements, I don't know if this is a result of one of those, but the finding 2022-003, which is, it just says something that may not have been detected except through auditing procedures, is that because of a new requirement? That's just kind of a hmm.
So finding number three, that was related, I believe, to the material entries, is that?
Yes, right.
Okay. So, so what has happened is the, the lapse in having somebody really detailing through in that supervisory role as a finance officer, that there were some entries that we had to post that passed that materiality threshold. There wasn't very many of them, but there were some, so we had to report on that, but it was really just a result of it wasn't detected. We took it back to finance and worked with them, and they agreed on all of those entries that we had, and they were posted. So everything was adjusted correctly, but just because they crossed that materiality threshold, we had to report on that.
Gotcha. No, I really appreciate, I mean, looking through it, it's very thorough as to what happens once there is something detected and the depth that you go into with, coming up with the corrective action, so appreciate that.
Yes.
Your finding on item number two on 194, Section 2, that we didn't follow the guidelines set in, set forth in General Statute 159 in Article 3 for $406,771 on the Oprah settlement, the way they're supposed to be listing that in a separate account. Now, now, now has that been corrected?
I believe you have brought that to the board, that, that's been brought to the board at this point, but that was just, you had it in, in the special revenue fund, and that was half the battle. The rest of the battle was, they were really specific about not co-mingling that. That money is getting treated very differently even going forward, they're looking at how that's going to be reported on your schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards, although it's technically not an award from federal or state, but because of the requirements around that, that settlement and that money, they did want that in a specific, separate special revenue fund. And that was something that went back and forth and, and came in pretty late, and that was a timing of not having somebody in that position to catch that once, once that was released from, from the state, so.
On, on page 201, the court, now the core banking system, the website has not, has not been implemented, has that, and has that been taken care of?
Yes, that, that has been addressed as well. That was something that wasn't fully communicated. A lot of the transactions that the county was receiving were electronic, it wasn't made clear during the time of the person, during the transition period, what still had to be followed with that online verification, with that core banking system. We have talked with Andrew in, in depth about that now, and I've addressed that issue. Everything was following compliance, it was really, that had to be, we took it all the way to talking to a state person just to confirm that that was a hardcore, you had to go in and do that verification process, just because we, we thought that if you were getting all these electronic transfers anyway, it didn't make sense. So we, we tried, but when we went to that state person, they said, yes, it absolutely had, you had to go through that monthly verification, and so that's been addressed since then.
Okay, and I got two more questions, and then I'll let it go.
Sure. Absolutely.
The, um, the, it's been noted here in several areas, our shortage of personnel, turnovers, that's a great deal of concern to me, and that's something that we, that we definitely need to work on. The NCFAST documents and supporting documents on page 199, the source documents, I'm sure that's done, but the one that's really, that's really sticking out is on page 10, we didn't boil it down, now we're reporting 99.02, and on page, that same page is reporting 98.76 for, for the amount of monies that's coming in, that's a .26 difference.
What, what page is he referring to there?
On page 10, on page 10, it's 98.76, it's in the front.
Can I look at your copy there? Can I look at your copy there?
On...
Yes, sir. So the property tax collection rate of 98.76% as stated on page 10, and what were you saying?
On page 15, you're reporting 99.02. As projected property tax.
Middle of the page.
Right, so that was for the 23-year. So that, those were for two different years. I think your other point importantly about the turnover and the lack of staffing, just a note on that, we have taken, and we're very happy when an auditor is able to bring these friction points to us so that we can make targeted improvements. And our budget team has actually looked at these specific areas. We have not only, recently, we promoted someone out of IT who has extraordinary MUNIS capability to help in finance in a new role, and we are also looking at a new person in finance in addition to that, to increase that separation of duties, to add to what we've got going on in our process there. And as far as NCFAST goes, in the DSS department, we are also adding a position to help address one of these findings that is listed in here. So we are trying to make the corrections, and we're very appreciative that Cassie was able to make those recommendations.
But I'm not, I'm just verifying, okay? This document here was dated for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And on page 6 of 10, it specifically states, "The rate of the tax base is established on total properties of 99.02." So I'm kind of confused on the 2023 that you're saying it related to here.
Sir, I will look at these numbers again, and we will make sure that they make sense. I will say that property tax collection rates can vary based on whether or not motor vehicle is included, based on whether prior year collections are included, and which year you're talking about, or if you're projecting to the next.
Go ahead and just, now just verify it for us and get back with us, please.
Okay, we'll do that.
Hey, let me say something real quick. I picked up a couple of things. I've looked at that book. I have it, I've read it. I'm hearing a couple of messages, and I just want people to understand where I'm coming from as a commissioner. Number one, you said something very key that I picked up on, and I actually wrote it down. And what you said was key. You said that you have controlled your spending. That's what you said. And I think that's great. And people don't understand, she said, "You have controlled your spending." And it's obvious and it's evident, if, you know, when you, when an auditor comes in, I've been through many inspections in the military and NCIS, I can tell you right now. I've really been, you know, with evidence and money and stuff, but when an inspector says that, that you have controlled your spending, and then piggybacks on that with your general fund balance is extremely healthy, that makes me feel good because it tells me a couple of things, that the priorities that the commissioners have set are being met, is what I'm hearing, number one, by the staff. And the staff has done a great job, and I include all of the staff, in preparing their budget to limit themselves within the parameters that we've set as commissioners. And I know that your firm went line by line, went through everything, I can tell by the amount of work and what was put into this. And number one, I'm proud to have you say what you said today, you know, because you could have come in here and said, "We had this and this, and your guys' fund balance is decreasing, blah, blah, blah." It tells me we're spending our money wisely within the county. That's what I'm hearing. I don't know about the rest of you, but I can understand pretty well, and that's what I'm reading and hearing, and I want to commend you guys for the thoroughness of what you did. There's certain things, you know, when you look at certain things in the budget, I know that you're going to find certain things. If you didn't find anything, I would be very suspicious. I would. If you didn't find any kind of finding, no matter what it was, I'd be very suspicious. I'd be wondering, okay, what are you guys doing? You know, who are you dealing with? Whatever. But the fact that you laid it out there and you took corrective action. When I went through inspection processes in the Air Force and with NCIS, there was a finding. There's always a finding. But you're going to find a finding, but what the important part is, what are you going to do to remedy that finding? What are you going to do to fix that finding? And you've answered that perfectly, and you've explained that perfectly in this finance book. So I just want to commend the staff for doing an outstanding job. I want to commend your efforts for what you produce. This is a very, very, very professional product, very easy to read, and I'm impressed that our, I'm very happy that our fund balance is as healthy as it is. But I'm going to remember what you said. That was key to me, because I picked up on that right away. You said, "You have learned to control your spending," because most people will sit there, out there in the public, and say, "We have a control, we have a spending problem." Based on you and what you said and from your findings, we've controlled that spending, which shows signs of being conservative on this board and fiscally conservative with our community's money, our citizens' money. That's what it tells me loud and clear. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time and effort, and I appreciate you explaining everything and putting everything in a very, very professional product.
Thank you.
One of the things I want to say is I concur with Commissioner Knapp, but one of the things is being without a director, a finance director, and bringing Andrew on staff, he has, when he hit the ground running, I mean, he worked hard. I mean, we've talked to him on several occasions. He's come to these commissioners and let us know. He worked very hard with you to get this thing like it's supposed to be, and I'm like, Commissioner Knapp, I concur.
Thank you.
Very encouraged.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming in today and sharing all this with you. We appreciate the findings that come out of this and the fact that you were able to meet with Andrew, and those have all been addressed and taken care of or in the process of being taken care of, if not all already handled. I think letting us know what the issues were, how they come about, and the reason behind it, it sounds like all that is in a good position moving forward, and we appreciate that work from not your firm, as well as from our finance people as well. And I want everyone to hear what you really started off with was a clean audit, unmodified, I believe is the terminology.
Unmodified now.
Which is the highest opinion.
Yes.
And currently, Onslow County is in the best financial position that it has ever been historically. And I think that's the stuff that everybody that's listening and paying attention to really, really need to know, is that the work was done, the concerns taken care of, and Onslow County is in great shape. So thank you very much for coming out today and sharing all that with us.
Yes.
Because I don't think there's any board action other than receiving the report.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a request for about a five-minute recess.
Wasn't me.
It was not.
Board of Commissioners, meaning back to order. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you so much, Chairman Foster. Commissioners, our next item is about Task Order Number 66 with our Phase Five Expansion out at the landfill. And for that, I welcome our Solid Waste Director, Mr. Tim Onst.
Good afternoon, Chairman Foster, Vice Chairman Knapp, and Commissioners. I bring to you today, for your consideration, the approval of Task Order 66, Professional Services for the Phase Five Expansion at Onslow County Landfill. The Solid Waste Department operates a Subtitle D landfill at 415 Meadowview Road Facility. With the recent approval of the contract for the Phase Five cell construction, additional engineering services are necessary to assist with project reporting and oversight. The proposed Task Order Number 66 with CDM Smith includes general engineering services, observation services, construction quality assurance monitoring services, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Site Inspection, and construction quality assurance reports, and project management for Phase Five cell construction. The total cost of the services included in Task Order Number 66 is $642,147. The costs will be funded by the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, and it is respectfully requested that Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider the approval of Task Order Number 66 and authorize the Chairman to sign any necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I hate to be the person that always has the questions, but I'm the new person. So, when you have an adjustment that is six digits, I'm just curious as to, you know, I think, oh, I can see where things would get adjusted, maybe a few thousand or something like that. That's kind of a hefty adjustment. How is it that that comes up once you're in the middle of it at such a large total? I mean, what I'm trying to say is, that seems like a large adjustment. And why wouldn't you know of that going in?
This is a separate adjust, this isn't an adjustment. This is separate from the actual approval of the cell construction project. This is the actual engineering services of the oversight of the construction process.
Okay, so this was never...
No, this is totally different.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you. Our next two items have been removed from the agenda, so our next item will be Item G, the project ordinance for the solid waste Phase Five Expansion. And for that, we will have actually Andrew present it instead of Mr. Warren.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The proposed capital project ordinance for the solid waste Phase Five Expansion project will be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act and as defined in the final Treasury Rule on September 20th of '22 totaling 7.2 million in total, and also the Onslow County Solid Waste Operating Fund balance for the remaining, or 4.094 million. The total project ordinance expansion budget will be 11.34 for a range of services including project design, engineering, construction, construction quality assurance, and project reporting necessary to complete the project. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the project ordinance for the solid waste Phase Five Expansion project and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next two items are going to be from Sherri Slater, our Assistant County Manager, regarding our American Rescue Plan Act Grant Ordinance Amendment and the amended project ordinance for the Senior Services Multipurpose Complex renovation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, I have before you the project ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Ordinance. In August of 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved the grant ordinance and appropriated funds to multiple projects. As those projects have come in, some of them under budget and some of them unable to be accomplished for one reason or another, there is $5 million in American Rescue Act funds available to be reallocated to other projects. In this opportunity, staff have identified the Senior Services Center Multipurpose Complex renovation as a place that we would recommend reallocating this $5 million. The amendment before you recognizes that change. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We would respectfully request that this Board of Commissioners consider approval of this amended grant ordinance.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I spent, I spent a day last week in Raleigh talking with the North Carolina Realtors and talking to our legislators about the housing issues in Onslow County and across the state of North Carolina. We don't have workforce housing for our people like our telecommunicators and our paramedics and our firefighters, our deputy sheriffs. We don't have housing that's affordable for those people. And I understand that there's a timeline here for this ARPA money, but we had originally appropriated this $5 million for housing in Onslow County. And I've recently come across some contractors who are in process, who are already in process of doing some projects or a project that could very likely expand their scope with this $5 million housing money. As much as I know we need the senior center, I think we have other ways to fund the senior center besides using this ARPA money. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna oppose this change because I don't think that we need to use the ARPA money for something besides housing. I think we, I do want to see the senior center funded, and I believe we can do that in other ways. But I'd like to see this money at least give us a few more weeks to see if we can find. I don't know how much effort we've made to try to find another contractor that could, that could do housing. But I'm thinking that $5 million needs to stay reserved for housing in Onslow County.
Just to answer the question about the effort that's gone, gone into it, it is a little more complicated, and you, you mentioned it, the ARPA timeline, and kind of the, the rules that we have to follow in expending specifically the ARPA funds, not to take away at all from your concerns, which I think are very valid for our area. But with the ARPA funds, we have a very limited amount of time to spend these funds, and the project actually has to be completed by the end of 2026. We have to have these funds encumbered by the end of this year. Under ARPA guidelines, with the contractor not being able to make the deal work, we would actually have to go out for a new bid process. We have to go completely out for RFP. We'd have to have competitive bids again, and then they would have to come once again to the board. A decision would have to be made, who would receive that money, and then they would have to get that project under contract and encumbered. So that's why the decision was made not to use these ARPA funds for that purpose. However, it does not prevent the Commissioners at a future time for using funds that maybe would have been used to supplement the senior services building to use instead if they wanted to fund low-income housing projects that come forward and seem viable.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Thank you very much, Ms. Slater.
Thank you, sir, if I may. In January of 2022, this Board of Commissioners passed the Senior Services Renovation Project Ordinance in, which would renovate the existing facility and provide additional space for senior programming. An amendment to the ARPA grant ordinance was made in the prior action. This proposed $12.5 million amended project ordinance for the senior services project would incorporate the additional ARPA funds of $5 million to the senior services renovation project in addition to the 7.5 million previously approved, and will consist of capital outlay in the amount of $10,800,000, and professional services in the amount of $1,700,000 for that project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the amended project ordinance for senior services at the Multipurpose Center and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And our last item.
Our final item will be our budget amendments, and we will call our Finance Officer, Mr. Andrew Prince, back to the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have one budget amendment for you, Budget Item Number 46, related to the Social Services Department receiving additional funding from the straight in the total of $8,049 to increase the revenues and expenditures of the grant program that it is associated with. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the budget amendment.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, I think it's time for Manager's Comments.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the Board for continuing to allow me to serve. On behalf of the budget team, we would like to thank all of our community organizations that applied. We had a record number this year that applied for nonprofit tourism funding. And we would really like to thank those that, that took the time to do a presentation for us and to explain what their organization does and what they do for Onslow County that on a nonprofit basis, we would have to pay for if internally in our organization if they were not doing it. And from a tourism perspective, explaining how they're bringing in people from out of town to stay here in Onslow County and spend money so that, that we have an increase basically in our sales and occupancy tax. Some really wonderful folks doing great things. And I will be delivering that, the link to that recorded presentation to our Board this week so that all of you can, as time allows, review that as you wish. But we appreciate all of those who took the time to do that for us. I also would like to announce to the public, this is County Government Month. County government does matter, and it is a, an honor and a pleasure to get to serve the public in this role, and we hope all of you have a great afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start Commissioner's comments with Commissioner Buchanan.
Oh, thank you.
Surprised him.
That's a surprise. I want to thank everybody for being here, but our telecommunicators, I think Commissioner Knapp told it well. They're, they're our line of defense. I mean, I'm a former police officer, and Knapp is, and so is Commissioner Bennett and whatnot. And I can tell you, when you've been out in the middle of the street someplace and you need help, when you ask that radio dispatcher to send somebody, you, you need help real quick. And the dispatchers are our line of defense, and they've always been there all the years I've been there, and Knapp can tell you the same thing, and Royce. We've been dealing with our telecommunicators so many times, and thank God that we've given them everything they need to make this county safe. So, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, thank you so much. Just wanted to say, I was very privileged to be able to attend the inaugural Veterans Treatment Court last week. Judge Searls did an incredible job presenting the benefits of that court, and I think I'm, I'm very grateful, being the wife of a, of a veteran that hopefully will never be there, but that, that it is there for people who have needs that really, I feel like our, our veterans are underserved. And I think this will be a great thing that will benefit our community in a wonderful way. Also, the week ahead is a holy week, for me anyway, and a lot of people listening, I think. And I just hope that it is a time of reflection and fellowship with friends, and just very meaningful for those of you who do celebrate Easter this coming, coming weekend. So, have a great week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Price?
I wanted to thank and congratulate our telecommunicators as well for saving lives and bringing lives into the world. Yeah, that is nothing bigger than that, than life. And so, that, that's one thing that you can say, that you helped save a life. That's, that's amazing. You know, and so, that's, that's something I really wanted to acknowledge there. Also, thank you to Jacksonville Commons Middle School for their invitation to come out and speak at Career Day. I enjoyed that and appreciate the invite. And also, thank you for the invitation to tour the Child Advocacy Center as well. I enjoyed the tour there and all that they do to, you know, to protect children as they, you know, have cases there involving abuse and instances there. So, I appreciate that invitation. Other than that, have a good afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scott? Thank you, Commissioner Price.
Well, to start with, I want to start out by saying I really appreciate the first reading, you know, responders that was recognized today. Don't want to forget the volunteer fire force that we, now that we have in Onslow County. So, please work on getting, you know, getting some of those folks to come up here and to be, you know, to be recognized too. Because if it wasn't for them, going, going out in their volunteer roles, we'd be a whole lot more busier than we are. Couple of things that I want to bring up, and I'm not happy about it a bit, but I'm going to do it for a reason. I hold here in my hand a 48-page document of one of our former employees. To me, this young lady's a hero. There are things that's listed in this document that should not be going on at any organization. And I want you to know upfront, I recognize that this is one side. I truly do. But if any of this is true, then we need to get a handle on it and make it work. And that's all I'm asking. My job, and anybody, and anybody else, our selected official, is to verify, and that's all Walter Scott is trying to do, to make sure that this is verified and is corrected. The other thing that, that I want to bring up in the open is, these documents is five invoices totaling $72,935.77. In my opinion, some of it is, it was needed, but not all of it. There's no checks and balances that's set up. I'm verifying, and I'm bringing it to the citizens and taxpayers of Onslow County, that we need to do a better job. You heard today that the financial report was stated that we're doing well. We are in a lot of areas, but there's some areas that we need to improve on, and there's no accountability across the board. Lately, our EMS services and stuff, yes, they do a great job, and I understand that. This past week, I received two more issues that needs to be addressed. And that's all I'm asking our county manager to do is verify and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing with our county employees. We've lost a lot of good people. We've lost all of our senior leadership, our knowledge. We don't have any checks and balances. That's why our finance department's got to report that they got, yeah, they got a clean report. But in the same token, the lack of supervision has what's put us in the predicament that we're in. And that's sad, because there's one person that's responsible for it. Our HR department needs some assistance that needs to be looked at, and it needs to be addressed. That's all I'm asking. And so far, it's taboo. I'm praying for our county. I'm praying for this administration. I think we need help, and we can be at the table to talk to each other and to help out each other. I'm not throwing darts. I see things that has concerned me, and I have the right to speak for the people that I serve. And I appreciate the opportunity, because this seat that I sit in belongs to the citizens of Onslow County. I hope y'all have a good afternoon.
Mr. Bennett? Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long day, but I do have some good news. Three organizations have come together. The Salvation Army, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the Capers Foundation have come together to try to help address food insecurity in our community. They formed a program called the Capers Bucket Brigade, and on Saturday, May the 6th, from 10:00 to 2:00, at the Salvation Army Building at 535 Bell Fork Road, across the street from Bell Fork Elementary School, folks will be able to come there and learn firsthand how to raise their own fresh produce by planting a grow bucket, especially for those who live in a food desert. So, we're going to be filling buckets with dirt and showing people how to plant seeds and grow their own vegetables on their own front porch for several hours. We've raised funds to provide at least 100 buckets for 100, hopefully 100 families. So far, we've already got about 70 who have signed up to come to our event on May the 6th. But there's still opportunities for more. We'll have presentations by counties, the county's extension master gardeners by the county health department, Onslow Memorial Hospital, Goshen Medical. And they'll all be there to learn about healthy eating and how to reduce their food costs. So, it's going to be a great time, May the 6th. And if you would like to support, there'll be a, a huge community yard sale at the Onslow Community Outreach, 1210 Hargett Street, this Saturday, April the 6th, from 11:00 to 3:00. And some of the proceeds from that will go to help the Bucket Brigade on May the 6th. So, good things happening in Onslow County. I love to see organizations partnering to make things happen, and we appreciate y'all being here for so long this morning. Have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Just a couple of things. First of all, what I said about the telecommunicators, I meant that sincerely. They've been, at least as far as I'm concerned, from a law enforcement career and my personal life, they've been fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Those people are the first people in the line of defense, your only communication to other people for assistance. And what they did today, I'm very proud of them. And you should be as well, and I know you are, Norman. They, very professional. And we, we kind of tend to forget them, that they're part of law enforcement and the first responders crew as well. They're very, very, very important to us. The other thing is, I wanted to comment, and you don't, Rick, you're not, you don't think I'm going to call you out, but I'm going to call you out, Rick and Omega. It's always good to see two elected officials that are here at every one of our BOC meetings, small as that may be. But that shows that they care, that they're, that they think that what we're doing is important, and they've got a vested interest in this county, even though you're from North Topsail Beach, you get part of our county, and I really appreciate you coming here. It's good, I know that you're going to be here on a regular basis. So, I do appreciate that, both of you. The third thing is, you heard the financial report, and I'm just going to talk about that just a little bit, okay? Kind of parallel something else in my thought process. What they've done, if you don't understand what this firm has done, has gone in with a fine-tooth comb and just raked our budget. They raked our finances. That's what they're supposed to do. That's what audit or CPA companies, they do. That's what they get paid to do. They're the experts, okay? You call an expert in to do your audits. You call in an expert if you want surgery. You call in an expert if you want your particular situation investigated. There are people with different defining roles. And when I, I asked them some questions off, offline about certain things. But I also pay attention to what they're saying. I pay attention to their body language, their mannerisms, you know, whether they can look me in the eye when they say something, whether they stutter, whatever. There's a whole slew of things. But what stuck out in my mind is that we, and I told you earlier, when she wrote, when she said, "You learn to control your spending." Now, that may be insignificant to you, that's big to me, because she's absolutely right. And how we justify that is because our health, our general fund is healthy, extremely healthy. We've stayed within the conservative parameters that we've established as a board, and that's due to the hard-working staff of Onslow County across the board. Because they've, we've demanded a lot from them. We've demanded them to make cuts to, to operate within a restricted budget. Where can we cut money here so we can use it for this? And the toughest thing about being a Commissioner is a lot of people don't realize, we have to prioritize. We have to prioritize what's important to us. And what happens is, when you do that, you have a tendency to tick certain people off, because what their priority is, is not our priority. That's just life, period. We look, every Commissioner that sits here, but there's up here at this Board and this Dais, we look at the overall health of the, of Onslow County. What, we had to sit there and systematically prioritize, which is number one, which is number two. Some things are mandated, we have to stay within. For example, the schools, public safety, our health department, those are mandated items by North Carolina General Statute. We have to work within that. Then we have to prioritize nonprofits. Everybody that's part of a nonprofit thinks that their nonprofit is important, and I agree with you. agree with you, but we also have to come down to, it comes down to what we think is more important or what's more needy, so to speak, and that's a tough job to do, because believe me, we get phone calls. We get phone calls, I'm sure most of the commissioners here, just like me, get phone calls in the middle of the night, text messages saying, well, you should have done this, you should have done that, why didn't you do this, you're not being transparent. And it gets, it gets old, because we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. And a lot of us sat back and let this audit system company do their business and let them find what they may, and you heard it today. I'm very proud of what they said. I'm very proud of what they found, and I'm very proud of the fact that they've offered remedies, and we're taking those steps to fix those remedies. But bottom line is, our budget is in great shape. It's probably been in the best shape that I've seen it as a commissioner for the last seven years. I don't know about you, Paul, you've been on longer, but that's, to me, is fantastic news, and that, to me, is, is the mindset set with this county, is what we do and how we do business and how we do it professionally. You know, in the county, we have directors that we, directors that are picked because of their integrity, because of whatever method to do their job. We've got Norman Bryson in charge of emergency services. We have a county manager that we appointed from this board to oversee the county budget. We have Sherri Slater. We have Carrie over there, you know? These are people that are picked because we trust them to do their job, plain and simple. Our job as commissioners is not to tell them how to do their job. Our job as commissioners is to basically ensure that what they're supposed to do is being done, because that's what a leader does. A leader trusts the people that he appoints, because you have to have trust both ways. If I'm going to trust you, you're going to have to trust me. And if you're in a position where you're working for a certain particular supervisor, that supervisor has to feel that he's trusted by his boss. If he's not trusted or she's not trusted, then what happens? You get paranoid. You don't know what to do. You don't know how to do your job. It's not our, it is not our position as commissioners to tell you how to do your job, period. And I'm going to say it again, because, and I really don't care if people get mad at me for saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway, because it's a true statement. Commissioners, we are like the mayors of the county. We govern the budget. We oversee personnel policies here within the county, okay? We do not get involved directly with the directors. That's your job. That's what you get paid for. If you can't do your job, then, then, you know, of course, we'll find somebody else. But my point is, is that when you get into the weeds, you know, I used to have a supervisor who used to get into the weeds with me all the time, my ASAC, and he used to drive me nuts, you know? You pointed me this position, don't you trust me to do my ops? And the best boss I ever had was my first special agent in charge here in the 90s, who looked at me and said, "You're in charge of the narcotics unit? Go have fun. If you need something, call me. I'll give you just enough rope, and I won't let you sink." I'd worked for that man, I even told him the other day, because I talked to him on the phone, I'd work for him in a heartbeat again. That's the kind of boss that you want, somebody who puts their trust in him, because in turn, I put my trust in them. So I just want people to understand that, that we have a big machine that works here at Onslow County, a big machine. What, 26 departments, I think it is? 26 moving pieces, and within that moving piece, there are sub-moving pieces and sub-moving pieces, okay? It's intricate, it really is, and it's very detailed work that some of these people do. And we're human. Everybody's human, every agency is human. You're going to miss something, okay? You're going to oversee something or overlook something, not intentionally, it just didn't come across your mind. That's, that's part of any, any organization, from the FBI to whatever. So I just want to applaud you for the budget, folks, I really do. I think that's good news, it makes me feel better. Our budget is strong as it is, and I appreciate everybody that came out today to participate. It's 11 o'clock in the middle of the workday, but you took the time to come see us, and I do really appreciate that, because this is one of the larger crowds we've had for 11 o'clock, so I'm kind of impressed. Actually, we had 20 more people, but they left. But thank you, and we'll see you at the next meeting at 6 o'clock.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Knapp. I'll be real quick, time to get out of here. We appreciate everybody attending this morning. Thank you to all the telecommunicators and the work that they do. Norm Bryson and Joe Dewayne, thank you for coming in today and sharing the information that you shared and all the services that you provide and, and the things that you have accomplished and what your department does for the citizens of Onslow County. There's a couple of things that are on our potential radar. I haven't really discussed them much with anybody. I think Commissioner Buchanan mentioned it, is our USO is in need of some money, and this board, I haven't been able to talk to everybody since we actually had a conversation, as we may look at trying to do something to encourage our, our congressman to send some money this way to, to do some work on the USO that's downtown and get that back up and running for our, for our service members in Onslow County and this board. Hopefully, we can do something to push that along with some kind of resolution. The other part is, is, you know, we, we've heard folks talking about paying the property tax and the burden that where that falls. We've all discussed it, I think we're all going to be in agreement, is that we'd much rather see a quarter cent sales tax added and maybe supplement, not necessarily supplement, but maybe adjust some things around to put that, that replace some of our property tax, that maybe we can take that off of our, our citizens if we can get the folks in Raleigh to agree to bring that to us to help out our property owners here. Those are just a couple of things that we're trying to, we're thinking about doing to really help provide some, some more quality and more services from this board to the citizens of Onslow County. And going back, I want everybody to remember this, this last two things. One is, as far as our budget from the last year, anything spent has been approved by this board. Every line item, everything that goes through there has been approved by the Board of, the Board of Commissioners. They don't, they don't spend a dime without our approval, and the first approval comes from the budget approved back in June or late May of last year, and that budget carries right on through the end of June of this year. So any dollar, dime, penny, nickel that's been spent has been budgeted by those departments. How those departments determine they need to spend that money is how they determine they need to spend that money, because we've already approved that amount to go into their budget to meet the needs that they feel is necessary to be met. And top of things is, I'm going to give a shout out to Andrew Prince that's come in and done a heck of a job, coming in and doing the things that he's done, and we appreciate you come into some situations and you're able to meet the needs or the adjustments or correct the things that took place and the findings that were there, and you've done a heck of a job of getting that taken care of and, and taking care of the citizens and the dollars here in, in the county. I'm not going to sling anything, because decisions are made by this board, and we're in that budget process now. We're going to have another meeting on the 10th of April in the budget workshop, and by the end of May, or wherever that falls in, we're going to have another budget that's going to be set up, and the departments are going to fall within that budget. When it comes to accountability, you heard the accountability this morning from the findings from Cassie Wilson and that firm and what they shared with us, and at the end of the day, there's hiccups and there's things that you got to correct, but their job is to make sure that we spend our money in the manner in which we said we would spend it. We don't spend it outside the budget that we approved. Everything's documented and comes through, and there's nothing running in and out of this county that is questioned or questionable in what we are doing and who's doing it and how they're doing it. So with that being said, the highest opinion that you can get is what Onslow County received. They've done a heck of a job, and that's why that audit comes in and does every year, is to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing and we're spending what we say we're spending. And the biggest, we're said we're spending this amount, and we don't spend over that amount. So kudos to the people in Onslow County and the services that you provide and the work that you do. We appreciate it. If it was an easy job, you wouldn't have any openings. It's a tough job, therefore, you got a lot of openings. If it was easy, hiring would be simple. It's not easy. It's hard work. Hiring is difficult, and that's what you have to understand. So thank you very much. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
We're adjourned.